Council meeting is called to order. First matter of business, council to hold a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to Establish Operating and Capital Budgets for the Operation of the County Government of York County for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government." I was just given a...so you have to sign up? You did not have to sign up to speak today. Well, I will call the four who did, let them speak, and then anybody else who wants to come up can. But this is a public hearing, so you did not have to sign up to be here today. Beth White.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you on behalf of the York Soil and Water Conservation District. My name is Beth White, and I am the chairperson of the Conservation District Board, and I am accompanied today by Commissioner Sandy Sin. The commissioners and staff of the Conservation District are grateful for our partnership with York County Government and the funding that we receive to carry out our mission. This funding enables us to exercise our partnership with USDA, bringing in nearly $200,000 of federal cost share money to benefit our local farmers, dollars that are spent at businesses in York County on projects that protect water quality and soil health. The mission of the Conservation District is to help coordinate technical, financial, and educational resources that best meet the needs of local landowners for the conservation of soil, water, and related natural resources. We feel strongly that a conservation ethic that begins in childhood will yield future adults who value our natural resources. For that reason, the Conservation District is very active in all four York County school districts with its programs to teach about conservation. This school year alone, we have reached over 6,000 students and about 270 classrooms with our programs, and we did all this with only two part-time employees. We look forward to being able to continue this endeavor, and thank you for the part that you play in this work. So, thank you very much, and we hope that you'll continue to support us.
Thank you. Billy.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and as always, I appreciate your service to York County. This is my opportunity to kind of present where we're at as far as our budget request for this coming fiscal year. Last year, I spoke during a budget workshop. This year, I was invited to come tonight, so I want to go through, kind of give you a little bit of an idea on what the last year was and where we're planning to go for fiscal year '20. Looking at 2018, 2019, some of the new initiatives that we took part in at Visit York County. First was the Yoko Brew Trail. These are all things that over the last 12 months that we've implemented at Visit York County. Destination Marketing Fee Program, and all of these, I'll go into a little bit more detail as we go through it. Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase, Mobile Visitor Center. We added a digital communications manager. We implemented the MLK Basketball Showcase at York High School. We did our first annual meeting. We also had 100% participation in municipal funding. We did our first sponsor funding. We implemented a regional marketing program. We launched Road Trip York County, which is our new YouTube series. We launched a new website, and we also implemented the Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator. Those are all things that, in this past 12 months, that we have been able to implement over and above what we did the year before. Now, measuring success. The Yoko Brew Trail won the Bundy Award at the South Carolina Governors Conference on Travel and Tourism. And two weeks ago, Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase was awarded the locally-created event of the year by the National Association of Sports Commissions. So, that was a national award for that basketball showcase. So, we have had a successful 2018, 2019. Now, continuing to measure success, York, two weeks ago, was the 2019 USA Today 10 Best Reader's Choice Travel Award for the Best Small Town Cultural Scene. Now, you may ask, why do we consider that as a success? Well, we consider that as a success because we were the ones responsible for that all happening. That was brought about by a media tour that we hosted that had a USA Today travel writer on it. We hosted them for three days in York County, and during that time, we introduced this travel writer to York and brought them over here. They had a great time. That put York on the map, so to speak, with the 10 best. And then York was able, through the voting process, was able to make number 10 on that. So, that is something that they can tout year-round. They can tout for the next year that they are one of the top 10 for Best Small Town Cultural Scene. Over the last year, we've played a part in 100, over 100 stories being published about things in York County as compared to 41 stories that were published last year. Also, we've had 4,143,086 impressions across all of our social channels. That is a 181% increase over the previous year. So, we are making a difference when it comes to telling our story on social media. Now, the Yoko Brew Trail, we've talked about that. As of today, we have 1,776 people that are currently on the trail. We've had 478 people complete it. We've had 4,178 check-ins with an estimated direct spending of $104,450. That is direct spending in those breweries over the past nine months that we've had the trail operational. Now, how we impact York County. Approximately $37 million in economic impact compared to $18 million in 2017, 2018. That is all calculated by the new Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator. Now, as far as our 2019, 2020 budget, the budget that we presented to you this year is $1,581,722. That includes additional ATAX revenue from Rock Hill, York, and Fort Mill. That also includes $166,400 in new event expense. That is 33 new partnerships. That is us partnering with existing events to help keep them in York County, and that is us bringing 19 new events to York County for next year. We've added $8,400 in costs for a tourism summit and what we call fam tours, which is when we bring in writers, when we bring in bloggers, when we bring in influencers to get them to write about York County. So, we've added money to our budget for that. And we've also added $36,280 in additional advertising expense for the coming year, with half of that being co-opt through South Carolina PRT. Now, here is our challenge. We're facing a $300,000 cut in fiscal year '20 and a $600,000 cut in fiscal year '21. That is a 42% cut of our budget from this year. Now, as far as I know, we're the only one that's taking the financial hit because of the land purchase. Because of that, we've had to look for alternative sources of funding, and looking at that, we looked at what other CVBs, how they're funded, to see if we're funded similarly to them. Now, how we are funded versus other CVBs. When you look at coastal CVBs, it's a whole different ballgame. When I talk about coastal, I talk about Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle Beach, Charleston, Hilton Head. Those CVBs, their budget is anywhere from $8 million to $40 million. And we have to compare ourselves inside of South Carolina because everyone's funding mechanism is different. The way North Carolina is, in North Carolina, the CBB gets 100% of accommodations tax funding from that geographic area. So, South Carolina has its own rules, so we have to compare inside of South Carolina. The Greenville CBB has a $7.8 million budget. The Columbia CBB has a $4.7 million budget. Visit York County, 1.5. Spartanburg, 1.1. Florence, $1 million. And Greenwood, $416,000. I've talked to each one of those executive directors, and those numbers came specifically from them. Now, how other CVBs are funded? How they get there? Columbia gets 85% of all ATAX collected, and then they get 100% of the overage. So, if the city or the county budgets $5 million for ATAX funding during that year, if they collect 5.5 million, then that additional $500,000 goes to the CBB. That's how Columbia's funded. Spartanburg, they get 52% of the ATAX funding. They get 30% of the H-tax funding. Greenwood gets 100% of their local ATAX and 30% of their state ATAX. Florence, 80% of their budget is ATAX funding. Now, as we have presented the budget to council, with that, York County, 39% of our budget would be H-tax and 36% of our budget would be ATAX. Now, meeting the challenge, facing a $300,000 cut this year, $600,000 next year, we launched the Destination Marketing Fee Program. This is something that we had put in place to grow the CBB. Our plan was, we were $1.4 million. Our goal was to get to $2 million as a budget because we have to compete with Columbia, and Greenville, and Myrtle Beach, and Charleston to bring events here. We just brought one here, or we are bringing one here. Well, the Junior Olympics Boxing Event that was in Rock Hill, we actually competed with Myrtle Beach on that. We were able to get that. So, talking about the Destination Marketing Fee Program, our plan was to use that to grow the CBB. Well, when we found out we were going to get cut $600,000, then we went into survival mode and knew that we had to use that money to get back to where we wanted to be. So, we have signed up 10 hotels in that program, and we budgeted $300,000 for this coming fiscal year. Now, municipal funding. We have 100% participation in ATAX or H-tax from Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover, York, and Tega K, to the tune of $205,000 for this coming fiscal year. We've also budgeted $53,000 in sponsorship funding. That is sponsorship funding from corporate businesses in York County that will be supporting our efforts to bring events here. PRT, South Carolina PRT, has a STAR grant. We've budgeted $30,000 in revenue for that for fiscal year '20. So, overall, for fiscal year '20, we are bringing $410,000 to the table as part of our budget, and that's new money that was not in our budget last year. Now, here is the budget that we presented to the county. Here is how we've structured it. Looking at that $600,000 deficit, 300 this year, 600 next year, here is how we would like to present to be funded, and this is all based on ATAX funding from fiscal year '18 collections. So, H-tax and ATAX is all based on fiscal year '18 numbers. So, fiscal year '19, we got $900,000 in H-tax. We got $262,500 in ATAX. So, that was 31% of the total H-tax collections and 42% of the total ATAX collections. So, all in all, we received $1.1 million from council this current year. Now, fiscal year '20, we're going to $600,000 on H-tax. So, that's 21% of the collections. Now, again, that's based on fiscal year '18 collections. I'm sure that fiscal year '20 collections will be well above that. ATAX, what we have put in the budget that came to the county was for $372,000 in ATAX collections. So, that would be 60% of the total accommodations tax that was collected for this coming year. So, that would put our budget at $972,000 coming from the county for this coming fiscal year. So, this was the request. Now, in fiscal year '21, and now that we're going to be cut $600,000, for next year, we're looking at 10% of hospitality tax funding, and to combat that, next year, we will ask for 75% of the accommodations tax funding. Now, that is, to me, accommodations tax funding is a true test of how we're doing. Putting heads in beds is the way that we grade ourselves when it comes to accommodations tax funding. So, that would put our funding at $767,543 for fiscal year '21. But the more important part is the percentages. This year, 21% of hospitality tax, 60% of accommodations tax. Starting next year, we're going to request 10% of the hospitality tax and 75% of the accommodations tax, not knowing what those figures are going to be. Because what we want to do is, we don't want to set ourselves at a particular dollar figure. Because if we set ourselves at a particular dollar figure, and then as H-tax and ATAX grows, we stay flat. So, what we're wanting to propose is to set a percentage. So, when H-tax grows, we grow. When ATAX grows, we grow. That is our goal going forward. Now, by the numbers, we need to grow. We don't need to just survive. Facing a $600,000 deficit, we're in survival mode, trying to get to where we want to be. We will continue to fall behind other destinations if we do not grow. That was the purpose behind the Destination Marketing Fee Program, is we need to grow because we're competing with Columbia, and Greenville, and Charleston, and Myrtle Beach, and all of those destinations. Now, for fiscal year '19, 85% of our funding comes from York County. Now, remember, this organization was created by county council to serve the tourism needs of York County. Currently, 85% of our funding comes from York County. If we stay as we are today, which is $262,500 in accommodations tax, and then we go to $300,000 in hospitality tax, starting in fiscal year '21, 35% of our funding will come from York County. So, in 18 months, 60% of our funding could go away from coming from the county. Now, our proposal that we submitted with our budget puts our funding, beginning with fiscal year '21, as 48% coming from York County. I think that's a reasonable number. I think 48% is a reasonable number. Would I like it to be 85%? Absolutely. But knowing that that's not a reality, 48% is what we are proposing. Now, for fiscal year '20, we're requesting an additional $110,000 to come from the accommodations tax funding in exchange for losing the $300,000 in H-tax. For fiscal year '21, starting next year, we're going to request an additional $90,000 in ATAX funding in exchange for losing an additional $300,000 in H-tax funding. So, in essence, over the next, this coming budget year and the following budget year, we're going to ask for an additional $200,000 in accommodations tax funding to help us subsidize that $600,000 that we're losing. That's what we're going to be asking for. We need stability. That's the most important thing here. We are recruiting events for 2023 now, and I know that seems like a long way off, but that's what we're doing now. We actually have contracts signed for events going past that right now. But we cannot confidently recruit those events until we stabilize our funding. And by stabilizing our funding, that's getting to a set percentage on H-tax and a set percentage on ATAX. That helps us stabilize our funding. Now, as you know, tourism's a big business in York County. The Panthers coming to Rock Hill will change the tourism landscape of this region. Those numbers that I've presented to you, when the Panthers come, double them. I've been to Frisco, Texas. I've seen what the Cowboys have done. I've seen the development that surrounds that facility. Rock Hill has never seen anything like it. York County has never seen anything like it. So, when we're talking about significant tourism, the Panthers change everything. It will be a game changer for this area. In 2017, there was $245 million in visitor spending because of tourism in York County. Also, in 2017, $5.79 million in local tax revenue came from people coming into York County to spend money. In 2017, tourism in York County saved every household $245 per year in taxes paid. Those are real numbers from SCPRT and the Department of Revenue. Now, in conclusion, from what our board approved versus what administration has placed in the budget for fiscal year '20, we're facing a difference of about $70,000. So, of the 110 in additional ATAX funding that we're asking for for this fiscal year, my understanding, in meeting with Mr. Shanahan and Mr. Madden, is that we're still, 40,000 of that 110, approximately 40,000 of that 110 has gone into what we've asked for, but there's still a difference of $70,000. We must continue to invest in ourselves. That's, when we look at tourism, we have to continue to invest in ourselves. Now, when I talk about investing in ourselves, think about, if you're a South Carolina fan, think about Steve Spurrier. For five years, South Carolina rolled through Clemson, they rolled through the SEC, and they were successful. And then, all of a sudden, Steve Spurrier quit recruiting. He didn't recruit for about two or three years, and now you see South Carolina paying the price for not recruiting for those several years. They didn't invest in themselves. When we think about our success, I stood before you on May 14th last year and requested $900,000 in hospitality tax funding. Council had budgeted $725,000. I asked for $900,000. You graciously gave us that $900,000, but you gave it to us with one stipulation. We're going to give you a year, and we're going to see what you can do. Well, you've given me a year. I'm here about a year and two weeks later, and I say this humbly, and I say this because I have a great staff, I think we've proven ourselves. I think we've taken this organization, despite of me, we have taken this organization places that it hasn't been before, on the state level and on the national level. And when you asked me to, when you said you were going to give me a year, that's what you did, and I feel like we've delivered on that promise. And with that, we faced a $600,000 cut. We're going to come up with $410,000 of our own money, so to speak, to help make up that difference. And what we're asking for is an additional $110,000 in accommodations tax funding for this coming fiscal year. And what we want to do is, we want to continue to grow this organization. We want to continue to increase tourism in York County and do the things that we were tasked to do by this council. So, that's my request. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Unfortunately, this is a public hearing, so we can't ask you any questions. But I would encourage anyone on council who has questions for Billy to please contact him after this meeting. We're kind of stuck by the rules. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Tiffany Byrd.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Byrd, and I am here with Safe Passage, the local victim service agency in Rock Hill. We service domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse victims, and I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our Child Advocacy Center. So, Child Advocacy Centers are child-focused centers that coordinate the investigation, prosecution, and treatment of child abuse while helping abused children heal. Our CAC provides several services, including forensic interviews, mental health services, victim advocacy, and community referrals to children and their non-offending family members. Forensic interviews are conducted by trained interviewers who speak to children in a neutral, open-ended, non-leading fashion in efforts to gain more information regarding the allegations. This is done to further the investigation for law enforcement and social services. Interviews are conducted at CACs so that a child can tell his or her reality in a more child-friendly environment, as it could be a bit intimidating for a child to be interviewed at a police department or at a DSS office. So, like I was saying about what CACs do, we are the coordinator of that investigation. So, we are the one-stop shop for anybody that is involved with that investigation to come together and work together at one time to figure out what's the best way to help that child and that family. So, who is the York County CAC? Safe Passage currently serves as a CAC for York County, and over the past year, we have conducted 228 forensic interviews. We have provided counseling and follow-up services to 140 families. We've also started an education group for children who have been involved in abusive investigations, and we are in the process of submitting our reaccreditation application to maintain our status as a fully accredited CAC with the National Children's Alliance. However, our efforts have not stopped with simply providing services to abused children. We have also engaged with other agencies and some local schools to stop child abuse before it begins. Over the past year, our community educator has provided sexual abuse prevention education to 3,378 children. Why do we need CACs? The Children's Trust of South Carolina estimates that child abuse and neglect cost South Carolina approximately $1 billion annually in direct and indirect expenses. Research has shown that coordinated investigations are more efficient and more effective. CACs make this a reality. In fact, a cost-benefit analysis showed that traditional investigations cost 36% more than CAC collaborative investigations. In fact, CACs can save as much as $1,000 per child abuse case by streamlining the process, creating efficiencies, and providing effective services. But all the work that we have accomplished to date would not have been possible without the members of our multidisciplinary team and the generous donations of organizations, volunteers, individual contributors, and York County who has made this space possible. Our MDT members include the York County Sheriff's Office, York County Department of Social Services, Tega K Police Department, the 16th Circuit Solicitors' Office, York County Guardian Ed Leitum, the York City Police Department, Rock Hill Police Department, Fort Mill Police Department, and the Kataba Indian Nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Billy Hagner.
I just wanted to make a few comments on the donations to the nonprofits. And I guess what kind of started me to thinking on this was several county council meetings back, y'all had a pretty lengthy discussion on donating to a nonprofit in the Rock Hill area. And so, I was just kind of... And so, I was just kind of, I never did hear the final results of that, but it made me thinking on a few things, and I'm just kind of asking to make y'all think about it, maybe rhetorical. That y'all do donate to, I don't know, a good many, several nonprofits. I think some of you are required to. And also, I looked on the, it's called York County SC Gives website, and there are over 70 nonprofits in York County. And just looking at them, all of them look very credible, and a lot of them are familiar with. And so, I guess my question or concern is, do y'all have a policy for donating to nonprofits? Because basically, what you're doing, you're, as you know, you're taking money from one group, from the taxpayers of the county, and giving it to a nonprofit. And it looks like to me, you really need to have some type of policy or procedure that y'all follow to be sure that the money is being given, if it is given, that it's been given in an equitable way. Also, I don't know how well it's communicated that money is donated or given to nonprofits, but some way you need to do it, either on the website or, and you may do it, and I just haven't seen it. But if we are, if the county is donating money to nonprofits, you know, it needs to be communicated to the taxpayer so they know where their money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Anyone else like to speak? Do I have a motion to close?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Public hearing has ended. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.